Good afternoon. We will now call the meeting of Waco City Council, August 4th, 2020, to order at 3:00 PM. Joining me online today are Mayor Pro Tem Andrea Bearfield, Councilmember Hector Sabino, Councilmember John Kennard, Councilmember Darius Ewing, and Councilmember Jeff Holmes. Please join us now from both sides. Thank you. On March 16th, 2020, the Governor suspended various provisions of the Open Meetings Act pursuant to his state disaster authority. The change was effective in March 16th, 2020, until further notice or until the state disaster declaration expires. In accordance with fiscal distancing guidelines and by providing as much transparency as possible, this Waco City Council meeting will not be open to the public. This meeting is being broadcast live at WCCC.tv. The audio is also being recorded, and video and audio recordings will be available to the public. According to the Governor and Attorney General, statutes that may require face-to-face interaction between members of the public and public officials are suspended, provided, however, that the governmental body offers alternative methods of communication with their public officials. This includes public comment on the agenda items. In an effort to allow for as much public input as possible, those who wish to submit their written comments on a listed agenda item were asked to submit their comments to the City Secretary by 11:00 AM today. The City Secretary will read into the record the comments submitted items on the agenda at the appropriate time. Individuals who have registered to speak on a public hearing item will be allowed to speak via conference phone for three minutes. We will now recess the regular session and convene the work session with a report from the City Manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I do have a couple of changes on the agenda today. You should have received two emails earlier. One with the revision to Resolution 2020-518 to reflect the City Manager's budget filing date is yesterday, August 4th. The second email contained a revised attachment for Work Session 2020-508 incorporating updated numbers that we received earlier this morning from the McLennan County Tax Office.
Bradley, there's been one more change.
Oh, there's been one more?
Resolution number 202517, which should be coming to y'all, adds references to Exhibit B and C into that resolution. Y'all should be receiving that shortly.
Thank you, City Attorney. I don't have any organizational updates today, so I'd like to quickly turn to Larry Holsey for his Holsey report.
Can you put me up? All right. We're going to go through this pretty quickly, and some of this I hope you will enjoy. That's on number two. Can you do that? There you go. All the way to one. All the way back to one. All right. You got a little preview there. All right. The Waco McLennan County Office of Emergency Management, the Waco McLennan County Public Health District, and the Texas Division of Emergency Management are partnered to offer free COVID-19 tests in July and August throughout McLennan County. Three walk-up sites and two drive-through sites were available around Waco and the county, including the multipurpose center, University Baptist Church on Dutton, and Tolliver Baptist Chapel, Tolliver Chapel on Elm Avenue, and McGregor High School in McGregor. Three more days of free testing will occur at MCC Highlander Gym starting next week from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, August 13th, 14th, and 15th. All testing is free, and each site has a limit of 600 tests per day per location. The less invasive cheek swab tests are being used, with the results returned typically in 48 to 96 hours. All of the five days of testing that have already occurred have been heavily used, with most is not all available tests taken, as of 5:00 PM Monday, the EOC office reports 2,334 tests have been given with this free test program. Our Municipal Information Office has created another one of our movie-themed PSAs promoting city messages, produced in-house using only city staff. We've done take-offs on Night at the Museum, featuring the Texas Ranger Hall of Fame, Wizard of Oz promoting adoption of the animal shelter, IT promoting no leaves and trash in the storm drains, Back to the Future with our own Doc Homes promoting recycling. And now I'd like to show you our latest movie-themed PSA we created promoting wearing a mask Spider-Man style. We provide these PSAs to all local TV stations to run, and they appear regularly on the Waco City Cable Channel. And that completes my report.
Great report there. I just had one question. Is that Holmes of the Spider-Man series?
No, that's Kennard.
That will remain anonymous.
Great report. Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, Larry. We do, Council, have one informal report on the agenda today presented by Galen Price, our Housing Director, regarding a substantial amendment to our consolidated plan for the years 2019 through 2023. On the agenda today, we also have two public hearings. Both of those are related to the Waco Tourism Public Improvement District, an initiative which I think could not be better timed for our community. Staff has really worked for the better part of a year with local hoteliers on this initiative. And once formed, the T-Pid, as it's known, will significantly increase our abilities to market Waco as a destination and drive convention business into the area. Todd Burka, our Director of Convention Center and Visitors Bureau, will make a presentation during the business session on those two public hearings.
Okay, Bradley, can I just go back a little bit, sir? I thought you had mentioned on the informal report. I appreciate all that Galen and his office have been doing to come up with new innovative and just decent good ways to help promote affordable housing and all this development. I'd like to have some input in that as kind of the programmatic work of it sort of goes. I know across the community, there's been some conversation about being more strategic with our, not only the lots that the city owns, but from affordable housing at this point, maybe some collective ownership, communal trusts, other type of vehicles. And I'd like to at least kind of have a conversation and get a better idea of sort of what, sort of how the structure of those initiatives are going forward. But I'm thankful that we're talking about it. I'm thankful that we're putting resources towards it. I think it's great, and I appreciate all the work of staff at this point. I just want to have a little more, as we kind of progress, I want to have some more conversations about maybe some different ways we could approach it that would be new to the community, that other communities have not, that could be strategic, more effective, just new for us, that could be really, really needed for the city.
Thank you, Councilmember. We'll have Galen report back on that.
Thank you. This is Holmes. I had just a couple of comments on the public hearings, on the related T-Pid, which I think is great, and I appreciate the staff's work on getting this all put together last year. I think it's going to be really beneficial for the hoteliers to have a voice, and how the city's marketed, and they really have skin in the game on bringing business into town. So I think this is well thought out and a great program. You know, as we return to our prosperity that we had here in the past year, I think this is an exciting program. I had a couple, just a question on the governance, and I don't know, it wasn't in the package on how was that board formed? How many people on the board and the operations? I don't need a lot of answers here, I can get this later, but I just wanted to make sure I was downwind on how, I assume it's going to work similar to the downtown Pid with that level of representation, but I don't know if it was going to be narrowed down to five board members, or ten, or everybody, or how that worked.
Councilmember Holmes, a good question. I'm going to ask Assistant City Manager Deidre Emerson to step up to the table and provide guidance. If we're not able to fully answer your questions, we can follow back up later as well. Deidre?
That's fine.
Council, after your approval of the creation of the T-Pid, as well as acceptance of the service plan of the T-Pid, then we will work with the hoteliers to develop that governance structure, as well as what that board looks like, and kind of how that works going forth. As we go through that process, we'll make sure that we keep you all well informed on how that works and what that looks like.
And maybe to the, one of the points I was going, trying to suss out, is, does the city have a representative on that board, or is it Burka through the CBB?
It's recommended that, it has been recommended through our work with Scott Josler from the State Association that Todd Burka would serve as an ex-official member of that board.
Okay. All right. I'll follow up with you. Thanks, Deidre.
All right, Councilmembers, we do have 18 resolutions on the agenda today, and I'm just going to highlight a few in the interest of time. The first three involve elections, and I'm going to turn it over to City Secretary Hudson to review those.
And there are three different resolutions that are dealing with either the special or the general election. The first item, Resolution 202515, is a resolution requesting your approval to enter into a joint election agreement and an agreement with McLennan County Election Services for them to conduct the election, both the special and the general election. Resolution 202516 is to order the November 3rd general election, for filling the positions that were moved from May to the November timeframe, which is our Mayor-at-Large, District 1 and District 3. And then the Resolution 202517 is to amend the order of special election that we ordered at our last City Council meeting, and this is to fill the vacancy left by Councilmember Dylan Meek, that is now being filled by Councilmember Darius Ewing, for a term that would begin in November and end in May of 2021. We're amending the order to reflect the changes now that we are contracting with the Election Office for the election locations and the early voting locations. We also have that change that Jennifer mentioned to begin with, and it's in the exhibit. And it's just making sure that we highlight in the exhibit that it is actually a November 3rd, 2020 joint general and special election for those early voting dates and times. And then in the resolution to reference various exhibits attached to that resolution. And that's all.
Bradley Esmerado, this is Hector. I have really one question. Since the beginning of the year when we talked about the May elections, I had requested, we haven't had an early voting location in South Waco in over a decade. Every part of the city has had one except South Waco, and so I'm curious to see how the conversations have gone in getting that set up for this coming election, because we will have school board elections, city elections, state elections, and national elections, all at the November election. And so it would just make sense for people to take advantage of early voting here in District 2.
Mayor and Council, when we decided to go ahead, or with my recommendation, to go ahead and contract with the Election Office to do the joint election for us, as well as the special election, I asked for us to consider the location in South Waco. I think at the time it was happening, we were just getting ready for the primary election, so the Election Office was pretty busy, and I'm not certain they were prepared to add that. We're continuing to discuss that with them, and they've given us an estimated quote to add that early voting location. The timeframe may vary. They're going to check with all the other entities, and apparently the McLennan County Commissioners Court has to approve adding this location before we can add that to our list. So we're in discussions based on feedback that we've received from you, and hopefully we can get that added, if that's the will of the Council and the consensus.
And, I'm sorry. Are we prepared to cover that cost if need be, Bradley?
Yes, sir. We anticipate that that cost is not significant in the scheme of our $140 million general fund budget. We'd be able to cover that.
And as far as working with the other entities, would that something that would come from the Elections Office, or would that fall on us? How would that work?
So Kathy is currently reaching out to them to let them know of a request, and we should hear something back. And I can always reach out to them myself, but she's coordinating that on her end.
I just would encourage that we do everything as a city to make that happen. I just think it's very important as we begin to serve all of our community, once again in the spirit of equity and inclusion that we have, that we make voting easily available to all of our constituency in the city. And so if I can help with anything, please let me know, but I would love for that to come about here at this November election.
Let me echo Councilmember Sabino's statements. You know, I too have some concerns about the lack of a vote center in South Waco for our early voting. We know that our situation is going to be different for this November election and require more time to allow physical distancing and all of those things, and I see no reason why there should not be a vote center in one of our larger demographic areas for our city, especially our larger communities of color. So I wanted to make sure that we, as we are in conversations with the county and the other communities and working to get these vote centers, that, you know, we, at the will of Council, of course, are almost insistent. I know that from my work within NAACP that McLennan County has already been named in several Voting Rights Act violation cases, and I don't want this one to be an additional case, because that, there have been some questions and issues about voter suppression, and if there is a way that we, the city of Waco, can ensure that that doesn't happen, you know, by assuming this small debt to make sure that our constituents are represented, then I'm glad to see that City Management is willing to do so.
Yeah, I'm glad to agree with both Hector and, I'm sorry, go ahead, John. Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say what you said, is I agree with Hector and Mayor Pro Tem Bearfield, that I think this is something we should push for, and I'm happy to, I'm glad that management's supportive and finding the budget, and I think that's just from what they said, the accessibility and availability of making it as easy as possible for our citizens and constituents to vote, I think is of vital importance, especially during pandemic times that we're in right now.
Yeah, I question the, I question the reasoning on the city having to pay the entire amount for this when it's going to benefit members of the county and other municipalities and school boards as well. But if that's what it takes to get this done, I think it's important that we do it, and then we discuss this going forward as a vote center for early voting, as a standard matter going forward, especially right now when the early voting has been expanded to try to help keep things safe during COVID-19. It makes sense to have, certainly makes sense to have a location in South Waco, and we are providing that location, so, through our community center.
And my understanding is it's going to be discussed at their next Commissioners Court meeting, and so it may be something that one of us may be able to go speak to the Commissioners Court.
Thank you. Thank you, Esmeralda.
Mayor, we're going to step back for a moment and allow Deidre to talk in a little more detail related to the T-Pid item and how the board is formed. So pardon that, but Deidre, will you give some more clarity to that?
Right. I just wanted to make sure that it's clear that when the T-Pid Board is formed, that that is not a board that is developed or appointed by the Council, that the hoteliers that are participating in that process are the ones that are developing that board. Todd Burka, it is recommended that Todd would serve as the ex-official member on that board, so that would be the city's input into that process, as well as them working with the CBB. So I really just wanted to make sure that that point was clear before we get to the public hearing this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deidre. All right. The next resolutions I wanted to highlight relate to, are Resolutions 522 and 523, which are both program project agreements for the use of WEMEC dollars to attract additional corporate investment and jobs into Waco. The businesses are committed to creating jobs paying $13.50 and $13 an hour, respectively. On a related note, staff has scheduled a future agenda item in September to modify the interlocal agreement between the city and the county to increase WEMEC's minimum qualifying wage to $15 an hour. Resolution 2020?
Oh, sorry. I was going to go ahead here. I've got to chime in here real quick. No, I appreciate WEMEC for hearing our concerns and addressing them. And I do want to reiterate that this had nothing to do with the merits of the projects themselves. I'm looking forward to having this company come in, and looking forward to them being good corporate partners to our community. I think there is still, I think what you just said in terms of what will be on our next agenda is a good first step. I think there's still considerable more work to be done in terms of how we go about our economic development from a strategic standpoint, that goes far beyond just what the wage level that we feel like we should incentivize is. However, I do think that, I'm glad to hear that they're listening, and I think this is a good first step, and I'm looking forward to seeing what else we can accomplish together to make sure that our economic development apparatus is as effective and robust as we all know it can and should be.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Mayor Pro Tem, do you want to go?
Mayor Pro Tem? I was going to echo Councilmember Kennard and just say that we appreciate staff for reiterating our concerns and WEMEC's collective willingness to hear what we say and find a way to get through it, and for the betterment of our communities. So I appreciate the work that you all have put into this.
And did, I want to reiterate what Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Kennard said. I also want to thank city staff, City Manager Bradley, for working on this. I know sometimes you're working with five or six different entities, and it could be a juggling act, but I want to thank you so much for taking the concerns of Council, taking it back, and coming up with a compromise that I think is between WEMEC and the county and the city, and so I just want to appreciate it. And it's all, this is just a great example of partnerships that are happening in our county for the betterment of our county and our city, while still being strategic with our economic development. So I just want to thank you guys for your work for this project.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Resolution 202525 is another one I wanted to highlight today, which approves an advanced funding agreement with the state of Texas for the J. Hines Elementary Sidewalk Project. As a reminder, you've seen this before, but this project will add .7 miles of new sidewalk near J. Hines and give schoolchildren a safe route to walk to school.
Council would like to remove from the consent agenda. Okay, seeing now the consent agenda will include Resolutions 2020-515 through 2020-532, with the exception of Resolution 20-2020-524 that we have received a comment card on. I will turn it back to Bradley to introduce the next work session presentation.
Thanks, Mayor. This afternoon, we'll hear at length from Assistant City Manager Paul Kane, who will be presenting Work Sessions 2020-508 and 509 together. And really, this presentation represents obviously months of teamwork between the staff and the Council. This year, you'll hear from Paul that we've been uniquely challenged, given the swings in revenue delays in the appraisal review process, and really uncertainty about the future related to COVID-19. But we've got a budget in front of you today that really focuses our efforts on the Council's newly identified strategic goals and continuing our strong history for financial management practices. I want to note that Paul's going to be making the presentation today, but he's got significant support from our staff behind him in preparing this information. There's really too many to name, but I did want to specifically acknowledge Janice Andrews, Isaiah Spreza, and Paul Diaz for their noteworthy contributions this year. With that, Paul, take us away.
All right. Thank you, Bradley. And good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and, you know, it's an honor for me to be representing the City Manager's Office and the Budget Team and presenting City Manager Ford's proposed budget to you today. And yes, Mayor Pro Tem Bearfield, Janice is the Gladys Knight to our Pips. And it's been a real pleasure for me to work with a great team, and I'm proud to work with them. The first slide that you see here, Mayor and Council, is an image of the cover for the Fiscal '21 budget. The photos are a collage of people helping people, which is at our core what the city strives to do. You'll notice that one photo shows folks wearing masks, which of course is an ode to 2020 and the challenges that COVID-19 has brought to Waco citizens, businesses, and families. Those challenges have also been experienced here at the city. Certainly, budget preparation was impacted by it. With Council leading the way, however, through the identification of your strategic goals for the organization, staff's happy to present the following overview of the proposed budget for Fiscal '21. The budget process to date has been thorough. Since April, Council and staff have been working together on individual components of the overall budget. These efforts have culminated in the proposed budget for Fiscal Year '21. So let's look at some highlights of the proposed budget. In the general fund, the largest fund in the city, where a majority of our city services are housed, the Fiscal '21 budget includes a number of strategic initiatives that we'll be talking about here in a few minutes. The taxable values have increased 1.3%, which is well below the average annual increase of 8% over the last four years. This year's increase is primarily due to the addition of approximately $188 million in new value. The total tax rate of $77.6232 is unchanged for the seventh consecutive year. In order to pay the debt service on debt already issued, just under two cents have been transferred from the operations side to the debt side. The proposed total tax rate is .7253, below the known new revenue rate of $78.3485. The fund's two largest revenue sources, property and sales taxes, comprise about 70% of all the general fund revenues. Both combined for a total decrease of about $4 million from Fiscal Year '20, about 3.8% down. Combined, these two revenues make up just under 1.5% less total revenues than they did in Fiscal '20. Reflecting the impact of COVID-19 on retail and restaurants, sales taxes are down 7.7% from Fiscal '20 budget, and 14.2% below the $42 million annual pace they were on prior to COVID-19. Overall, eliminating drawdowns for one-time and recurring expenses, or non-recurring expenses, the Fiscal '21 budget is 2.19% below Fiscal '20 levels. Some highlights from some of our other funds. An active capital improvement program that includes $66.4 million in utility improvements and about $24 million in streets and facilities improvements, as well as $2 million in park improvements is included in the budget. Staff has proposed, and the City Council has supported, a new water rate structure that includes additional tiers with ship cost towards high consumers. Overall, for a typical water and wastewater customer using 8,000 gallons of water and contributing 5,000 gallons of sewer, the total utility bill will decrease slightly. Solid waste fees are unchanged. Plans to accommodate future disposal needs will continue during Fiscal '21. In addition to retail and restaurant impacts, COVID-19 has also negatively impacted tourism in Waco, as we all know. These impacts are felt in numerous city operations, such as the Mammoth Site, the Texas Ranger Museum, and Hall of Fame, most significantly felt at the Cameron Park Zoo and Convention Center. At the zoo, revenues are down just over 15%, requiring the utilization of $600,000 in reserves and an increase of $211,000 in general fund support. Over at the Convention Center, revenues are down almost 20%, and more than $1.5 million will be needed from reserves to cover operational expenses, even though expenses have been cut 17%. Likewise, the Ranger Hall of Fame and Museum is also utilizing reserves to balance its As mentioned previously, the Council has established these seven strategic goals for Waco. Process began in February of this year, concluded in April, with identification of these goals, which are both internally and externally focused. Combined, these goals comprehensively establish paths forward, which will lead Waco to a better future for all of its citizens. In keeping with the goals the City Manager has included within the Fiscal '21 budget, specific initiatives designed to move the city forward on each of the paths that the Council has identified. council has identified. To ensure Waco has a high-performing city government, 1.8 million in funding is set aside to fund various initiatives, including additional resources in information technology to expand our management information capabilities via dashboards and other tools, as well as to enhance our overall financial transparency. A management development and fellowship program to prepare future managers for opportunities as they arise. There's a new holiday to honor our veterans, many of whom are city employees. And funding for possible mid-year raises should sales tax revenue solidify and new efficiencies and operational expenditures be identified. To enhance our citizens' quality of life, 2.7 million will be invested in operational initiatives and expanded capital investment. A new position coupled with a reassigned position will create a neighborhood vitality initiative charged with invigorating our neighborhoods through communication and funding for grassroots, neighborhood-born programs. 2.1 million in bonds for park improvements is included, chief among that, acquisition of parkland in the China Spring area. Refreshing our parks, recreation trails, master plan is also included in the proposed budget. And last, implementation of improvements out at the Cameron Park Zoo will begin this Economic development is the engine that powers Waco to its future. The fiscal '21 budget includes a quarter of a million dollar increase in contributions to the WEMEX program, creation of a small business development and resiliency initiative, which will meet the needs of our small businesses and expand our covert efforts by further leveraging CDPG dollars for those businesses who hire Waco residents and invest in Waco. And included in that is our first $2.75 million payment to the Riverfront Project. Sorry, I advanced the slide too quick. The council has made equity one of the seven strategic goals upon which Waco's future will be built. Building a culture of equity will become tangible in our organization via the investment of almost 2/3 of a million and additional staff members to administer minority-focused procurement programs, to identify city policies and practices which foster greater equity, and to partner with our economic development team to provide opportunities to minority-owned small businesses. Unique projects like the steam center will also be part of that effort. To thrive, Waco must be a safe city, and that involves our citizens and our policing efforts. To that end, 1.5 million is allocated to create a community policing initiative in the police department with seven new positions. Historically, community policing has demonstrated positive results by fostering relationships with citizens, community organizers, neighborhood associations, and small businesses. Given the challenges seen nationally, this program is a critical element in the success of law enforcement in Waco. Safety also includes the ability of fire personnel to arrive on time and with the right equipment. $600,000 in funding is included to replace seven pieces of fire apparatus, those with an average age of 18 years. A successful city must be able to sustain itself through growth by ensuring that growth does not negatively impact the city financially or environmentally. During fiscal '21, we'll be proposing a new subdivision ordinance, which will provide better quality development in Waco. We'll also propose new impact fees, which will shift cost of infrastructure from existing residents to new development. And environmentally, there will be opportunities to expand the city's use of electric or hybrid vehicles and to develop capital replacement programs for almost $7 million in needed roof and HVAC replacements, which maximize the use of energy-efficient technologies. Installation of new solar panels out at Fire Station 6 will provide the city with a real-world laboratory to evaluate the cost benefits of solar panels and use this evaluation and development of our capital improvement programs. On the infrastructure side, infrastructure is the skeleton upon which everything else in the city is built. Waco has, particularly over the last few years, made it a priority to invest in our infrastructure, and that continues in fiscal '21. It includes approximately $66.4 million in utility system improvements and just under $24 million in improvements to street signals, bridges, and facilities. The city's Better Streets Waco program will receive almost $20 million in funding during fiscal '21. Let's look at the details of our all-fund summary. The city of Waco is a half a billion dollar municipal corporation. As might be expected, our employees constitute approximately 28% of total expenditures taken in both salaries and benefits. Infrastructure investment in the form of capital and debt, debt service comprises more than 26% of all expenditures. On the revenue side, it's probably surprising to most members of the public that property and sales taxes only provide a combined 24% of all the municipal funding sources. The largest single source of revenue are charges for service at 33%, which includes water and wastewater fees, solid waste fees, building inspection fees, and certain park and recreation fees, among others. Let's turn our attention now to the general fund, again, the largest fund and the fund where most city services are provided and where all of the tax revenue is deposited. Total expenditures are up less than 1% over fiscal '20. Eliminating one-time expenses, fiscal '21 expenses are actually down 2.19% as compared to fiscal '20. The largest dollar increases are seen in the employee-related accounts, salaries and benefits. These increases include 1.5 million for conditional mid-year increases, annualized amounts for tenure and other compensation that was given during fiscal '20. Five positions were transferred from other funds to the general fund, and the 13 positions that were added as part of the city manager's initiatives for fiscal '21. In the general fund, employee-related costs, salaries, and benefits comprise 63% of operating expenditures. Transfers out, about 9% of expenditures, include transfers to health services, transit, the Ranger Museum, zoo, as well as support of the Better Streets Waco program. Thank you, Mr. Relman. On the revenue side, as discussed earlier, significant decreases are seen in property and sales taxes. Reductions of over half a billion dollars in charges for service reflect economic downturns due to COVID-19. Investment earnings have decreased by just under $1 million, reflecting the extraordinarily low interest rates in the national economy. Business and occupation fees, which include franchise fees, are trending lower than budget but are in line with actuals from fiscal '19. Increase in government, in intergovernmental, is driven by CARES Act funding and a transfer from child safety deferred revenue. COVID is anticipated to have a financial impact on fine revenues. Then as part of the strategy to support COVID-impacted funds, the insurance risk fund includes transfers out to multiple funds for fund balance support. The 2.37 million in transfers from the risk fund will benefit these other departments, but will allow the risk fund to remain above their reserve requirement. Looking at general revenues by type, sales taxes, and property taxes, combined for 70% of general fund revenues, other funds, such as water, wastewater, and solid waste, contribute significant amounts to the general fund in the form of overhead, pilot, and other business Due to revenue reductions, certain one-time expenses that will not require future year's revenues are being funded by reserves, such as assignments and unassigned fund balance. With regard to assignments, the uses were described and discussed during the July 21st work session. Unassigned fund balances being used for one-time expenses that will not reoccur next year, those being the park master plan and some of the equipment as part of the community policing initiatives. When we look at general fund, fund balance, these two tables show the overall condition of the fund balance and assignments over the current year in the proposed FY '21. Notice the information contained in the red boxes. At the left is the status of the unassigned fund balance based on income statements that are contained in the budget. At right, the status of the unassigned fund balance after the policy recommendations discussed during the July 21st work session are implemented. Staff will be bringing these policy changes forward in conjunction with the adoption of the sales tax, or the tax rates on September the 8th. A little more about the sales tax COVID impact. As Budget Manager Paul Diaz previously noted, the council's sales taxes were on a great pace prior to COVID-19, projected at more than $42 million, more than $3 million above budget. But as we know, times have changed. Based on detailed modeling conducted by Mr. Diaz, projections for fiscal '20 are projected to be at the $39 million budgeted, but well off the 42.4 pace that we were on. For fiscal '21, staff is projecting a total of $36 million, about $3 million below fiscal '20 budgeted amounts. COVID impacts during '21 are difficult to determine, much less project. Staff believes this amount to be conservative based on post-March sales tax receipts. Actual receipts will be monitored during the year, and any needed adjustments will be made. Want to spend some time with you, talking, probably the majority of our time today, talking about property tax valuation and rates. Reflecting the uncertain economic times and the difficult challenges these times have presented to our friends over at McLennan County, at both the Appraisal District and the Tax Office, the city of Waco received a certified estimate of the property tax roll this year. Within that estimate, a little over 28% of the total value, 3.2 billion, remains under ARB review. Last year's certified roll included only 2.5% of the values in ARB review. Clearly, these are unprecedented times. In order to prepare the budget, staff utilized estimates from the county as to what amount of that 3.19 billion would actually be taxable for '21. The 2020 estimated tax roll includes a grand total of taxable values. These amounts do not reflect ARB adjustments, and they include TIP values. However, they do provide perhaps some insight as to the changes in the roll. Gross values are up $419 million, of which 188 million is new value. This data indicates the base value appreciated at 2.14%, but remember, these are prior to the ARB work on all these numbers. We can see changes in significant, in single-family residences, multifamily residences, and electric utilities, with reductions in industrial manufacturing, commercial personal property, and residential inventory and other accounts. Residential values as a percent of total values have increased 2.5% to 54.8% of total values. Again, all of these values here are, at best, probably illustrative, since 28% of the value is still under ARB review. TIP values are important to note because taxes on these properties are not realized in the city's operational property tax revenue or debt service revenues. As this graph shows, values have increased substantially since fiscal '16 in the TIP, more than 102% or 289 million dollars. Likewise, TIP values have become increasingly more as a percent of the total taxable value, rising from 3.65% to 5.24%. TIP growth year-over-year, shown in blue, has been substantial. The chart above, the chart shown here, I'm sorry, shows valuations since fiscal '2016. As shown a couple of slides ago, the grand total taxable values on the certified estimate totaled 11.2 billion. This number is shown in the certified estimate on McCas' website and was also publicly reported. However, this amount includes all values currently in ARB review, that 3.19 billion I spoke of earlier. The county has subsequently advised us only about 91% of this amount, or 2.9 billion, is estimated to be taxable value. This 2.9 billion amount added to the certified ARB approved value of 8 billion yields a taxable value of 10.9 billion for tax year 2020, fiscal year '21. This is a 1.44% increase over tax year 2019, fiscal '20, far less than the 3.89% in the grand totals. In the next step of the process, the TIP values of 572 billion are subtracted from this amount to yield a net taxable value of 10.34 billion for funding of city operations and debt service. The proposed fiscal '21 budget is based on this 10.34 billion dollars in value, an increase of 1.33% over the 10.2 billion in 2019 or fiscal year '20. This percentage increase is well below the average year-over-year increase of 8% for the previous four years. So what's all this mean for our tax rates? The city's total tax rate remains unchanged at 77.6232 cents per hundred dollars in valuation. To service previously issued debt, based on the 10.34 million in taxable value mentioned previously, the debt rate must climb to 12.95 cents, an increase of 1.89 cents. As a percent of the total tax rate, debt has increased almost 2.5%. Assuming a total fixed rate of the 77.6232 I mentioned earlier, less the 12.95 for debt, operations and maintenance rate is 64.6728. And a penny on the tax rate generates $1,013,000 in revenue. These charts show how the two components of the tax rate, operations, and debt service, are as a percent of the total overall tax rate. The chart at left looks at cities around the state that are comparable to Waco in terms of population. You can see the average for these cities is about 2/3, the ghost operations about 1/3 to debt. Waco is above that average, but it's worth noting that there are significant differences between these cities in terms of values, infrastructure age, where they allocate certain costs, et cetera. The chart at right compares to other McLennan County cities. Note, Waco is much closer to the average, likely reflecting the commonalities in the region in terms of tax valuation, et cetera. This graph illustrates the changes on the O&M side of Waco's budget, and the O&M rate, shown in the blue line, reached a high of 67 cents in fiscal '19 and has declined since. Taxable values shown in the blue column saw periods of substantial growth year-over-year through 2019, a small decline in fiscal '20, and a sizable decline in fiscal '21. You can see that our total year-over-year increase in fiscal '21 for operations is actually a reduction of 1.55%. This reflects the 1.89 cent shift in the rate that I spoke of earlier. Looking at average homesteads in the most current role that we've received, overall values have seen a modest increase. The taxable value of a homestead has increased about 6%. Though the overall tax rate is unchanged, the city tax bill for an average homestead will increase about $73 a year over fiscal '20. So how do these proposed rates relate to the limitations imposed under SB 2 or the Texas Property Tax Reform and Transparency Act? According to the calculation provided by the county, the voter-approved tax rate, or VATR, is 83.4 cents. You see that in the, shown in the black line at the top. This is the rate at which the voter approval is required. This is formerly called the rollback rate. The no-new revenue tax rate is 78.3485 cents. The no-new revenue tax rate is a rate at which the city receives the same amount in value, or in revenue, as it did in previous years from properties that are taxed in both years. The no-new revenue tax rate was formerly known as the effective tax rate, or ETR. The 4.18 cent increase in the no-new revenue tax rate reflects adjustments to 2020 revenues and prior year's revenues, as well as apparent declines in the value of properties that have been taxed in both years. The no-new revenue rate for, on the MNO side, adjusted for sales tax, is 67.6247 cents. This is a rate that the city receives the same operational revenue as it did in previous years on taxes, on properties taxed in both years. This was formerly the MNO effective rate. So you see in the chart that for fiscal '21, at the far right, the proposed budget on both the total tax rate, which is below the no-new revenue tax rate, and the O&M rate, both are below the effective or no-new revenue rates for fiscal year '20 under the new statute. So once we get past all these numbers, that's where we're at. We are below both of the limitations in the new bill. So what would additional revenues, what additional revenues would we receive if we were adopting either one of those two tax rates? This chart here shows how that would work. At, at left, in the bold numbers, is the proposed budget. In the green, you see what additional revenue the city would realize if our rate were at the no-new revenue tax rate, essentially what we received in taxes last year, the difference being about $734,000 per year. And the yellow at right is the voter-approved tax rate if we were to adopt a rate that high, which would be 83 cents per hundred. That'd be a five, almost six cent increase and would generate $5.8 million in additional revenue. I think the most important and meaningful information to glean from this is that by not raising the tax rate to the no-new revenue tax rate, the tax rate proposed for fiscal '21 is effectively 7.7253 lower than the current tax rate. Penny shifting has been a strategy to bolster our tax-supported CIP- Penny shifting has been a strategy to bolster our tax-supported CIP and to manage the limitations of the Tax Reform Act. This chart shows the fluctuations of that penny shifting over time. You'll notice in fiscal '21, our most sizable increase occurring in the proposed budget, 1.89 cents going over to debt, and that's a comparable reduction on the operations side. And this 1.89 shift equates to about 1.9 million in revenue. Finally, due to the penny shifting, a property taxpayer is paying less to fund city operations than they did in fiscal '20. This is demonstrated in this graph. You see here for a theoretical property that's valued at $100,000, how the shift in pennies affects how much of their tax bill or tax payment is going to operations versus debt. I'm walking through some of our enterprise funds, some of the largest funds, the larger enterprise funds. As you know, enterprise funds are governmental funds that operate much like a private business and that their revenues come from selling a good or service and the revenues are used to pay for operating expenses. Utilities are the largest of the enterprise funds in Waco. So we'll start with the Water Utilities Fund. While the year-over-year total expenses show a pretty sizable increase, 91% of the increase is due to an accounting change. In previous years, the excess revenues required to provide debt service coverage were included in the rate calculations but were not shown as expenditures. To promote transparency, these amounts are being added to this year's budget. Without these increases, the net increase is about $271,000. Increases in debt service and non-operating expenses, which are transfers primarily, are offset by a decrease of 1.1 million in operating expenses, which is primarily capital. As we discussed earlier, water rates for fiscal '21 are shown in yellow. These rates were discussed with and accepted by the council during the July 14 budget and audit meeting. Most significant is the addition of tiers with the volumetric rate structure and the overall shifting of cost to large-volume consumers. Under the current rate structure, the cost per gallons began to rise at the 25,000 gallon mark. Under the proposed new rate structure, costs per gallons began to rise at the $15,000 gallon mark, or 15,000 gallon mark. On the wastewater side, again, similar to water, we did budget this year for debt service coverage, which accounts for about 56% of the increase. The net increase absent those changes is 1.61 million dollars. There has been a 2.6 million increase in Waco's portion of cost to operate and maintain the WMR's treatment plant. It's offset by savings and other accounts. Water rates, I'm sorry, wastewater rates are projected to go up $1.55 per month, and that is in the fixed rate, not the volumetric rate. All of these water and sewer rates combined are reflected here in the graph that you see before you. The gray and blue represent the current tax, or the current utility rates. The green columns show the changes. And you'll note that once you get above 8,000 gallons is when you begin to see an increase. Up to that point, the total bill actually goes down a little bit for lower users and begins to even out about 8,000 and then go up from there. It's typical in a budget presentation to show all the other different cities around and what their water rates are. Of course, this is difficult to do and it can be somewhat deceiving sometimes because of the use of groundwater and lake availability and treatment requirements and other things between the different cities. This information is shown here. I think the significant thing to show you is you'll see in the yellow bar that the proposed rates here in Waco for an average consumer actually are just a tad down. In WMR's fiscal '20 was the first year of the newly restructured WMR system. Since projected flows were used in '20, we were able to capture some of the actual flows during this year. And so for fiscal '21, we're able to adjust based on the accurate flow calculations. That is increased revenue for both Waco contributing to WMRs as well as all the other cities contributing to WMRs to help really capture the real cost for each one of them. We also added 1.9 million in capital expenses in WMRs. Over in the solid waste fund, the rates are not changing. We have slight reductions in operating capital for equipment and for cash capital improvements affected this coming year, which slightly lower our expenses overall. I mentioned the impact of the tourism decline on some of our operations. When we look at the convention center, it reflects those changes from COVID, certainly. Hot-mot revenues are projected to decline over 18%, while charges for services such as rentals, et cetera, are down over 30%. Adjustments have been made on the expenditure side with operating cuts in capital, contracts, supplies and maintenance. HVAC replacement in '20 is also removed in '21. Of course, the final result of all that work is a deficit budget requiring the use of 508,000 in reserves. This amount, coupled with shortfalls in the actual expenses in the current year, have reduced the cash equivalent fund balance by just over $1 million. For fiscal '21, the ending cash balance of 1.6 million is 27% of total budgeted expenses. Over at the Cameron Park Zoo, like the convention center, it's being affected by COVID and the decline in tourism. Admissions seen in charges for service are down 33%. Across the fund, revenues are down 15%. The expenditures have been cut a little over 6% in order to mitigate for some of the revenue declines. Of course, at the zoo, animal care expenses must continue, which limits the ability to cut our operational expenses. Despite an increase of about $200,000 in general fund support, the result is a deficit budget of almost $600,000, requiring an equal drawdown from reserves. You can see that over the last two fiscal years, the total reduction in reserves is just over $746,000. Last, I'll recap our capital improvements in fiscal '21 proposed budget. Over on the utility side, you'll notice that planned water projects are listed here at the top, most significant of those being the Techside improvements to Highway 6, about $10 million, 10.4 million. Of course, these were not part of our original utility master plan. We also have some projects to improve redundancy in our system as well as to expand our system's capabilities. On the wastewater side, significant projects are included to address growth in the China Spring area as well as Highway 84, the unexpansion proposed at Bullhide. On the general debt side, or the tax-supported side, 26 million supports a number of new projects in '21. We're going to do some work at the police tower on the garage elevator. We also have some design costs for a new crime scene lab and roof replacements over at the zoo. We also have funding for park improvements, as mentioned earlier. Again, the new parkland at China Spring being a key part of that program. On the public works side, Techside will provide in the city an annual evaluation of our bridges during '21. So we've set aside $2 million for repairs noted in that inspection. We've also created what's called an infrastructure leverage fund, which will allow us to leverage city dollars with private sector and/or grant funds to construct street and stormwater improvements around the city. Almost $20 million is dedicated to the Better Streets Waco program and half a million dollars identified for signal improvements around the city to improve transportation efficiency. As we discuss debt and capital funding during '21, I just want to point out that we are concerned with some of the value numbers that we've gotten recently. We wanted to let you know that the CIP, we believe, is subject to change. We'll be working certainly with the Budget and Audit Committee, with City Council, to take a closer look at our debt capacity during '21. Our bond sales usually occur in February, so between now and then, we'll be taking a close look at all of our projections for debt capacity on the tax-supported side and making sure that our CIP that we're ultimately going to recommend and support through bond sales is conservative and reflective of the changes in values that we've seen. So here we are, 50 slides later at the end. The fiscal '21 budget accomplishes a number of key objectives. It implements plans based on the council's goals. There's no increase in the tax rate. We're about 3/4 of a penny below the no-new revenue rate. We've absorbed almost a 2-cent shift from operations over to debt. We've absorbed more than $4 million in property tax and sales tax losses without any impact on employees in the form of layoffs or furloughs. We've also been able to maintain our current service levels and we have money in the budget for a mid-year adjustment should certain things, sales taxes prove solid and we make some changes on the expenditure side. And overall, recurring expenses excluding those one-time expenses are down 2% from fiscal '20. Utility cost increases primarily attributed to debt increases will be provided for via a more equitable rate structure, reducing impact on low consumers. Financial plans to weather the COVID impacts on the tourism side of our business are in place. Provisions include expenditure reductions, use of reserves, and in some cases, increased general fund support to make that happen. And finally, Waco's commitment to infrastructure investment continues with more than $90 million committed to various projects. In addition to strengthening the backbone of the city, our infrastructure, these improvements will also create jobs in our local market and help bolster some of our restaurant and retail sales in the community. As we look forward, we want to talk about some of the future steps coming up in adoption of our budget. August 4th, today, we're presenting the budget. There's a resolution to set the date for the public hearing over at September 1st. August 18th, council meeting, we'll have an item to set the public hearing and vote on the tax rate, which that will be September 8th. September 1st, then, at the regular council meeting, we'll have the public hearing on the budget and adoption of the budget. Again, that will occur on September 1st. Then on September 8th, a special council meeting, we'll have a public hearing on the tax rate and adopt the tax rate. Certainly appreciate your time and attention, Mayor and Council. I know it's been a very long and detailed presentation. The budget team would be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Yes, this is Holmes.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead, Holmes.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mayor. Okay, I'll start off. Great presentation, Paul. And again, I've been here four years now. This was the, the budget process that we went through has been very deliberate, very informational, very transparent. And I appreciate all the work that you and your, your new team, the PIPs there, have done in pulling this together. It's, it's great. Just a couple of comments on the overall budget. Again, we're preserving what I think are very important initiatives, for me anyway. Again, providing best-in-class services, police and fire protection. We're seeing those go up a little bit just by necessity. And we, I think this council has said this is a high priority to us and we are, we're seeing a little bit of increase there, but we're containing the costs as best we can. Economic development, again, this is something that we're committed to in the riverfront on Elm Street. As we see Floyd Casey all across the city, we're committed to having the economy develop and bring jobs in and bring prosperity and value to the city. And I appreciate working, working that into this year's budget. You've also addressed very specific council goals that we've had relative to equity and inclusion. And I think that's, is a high priority to this council and I appreciate how you worked that part in. The improved infrastructure, that's, and again, one thing that this council's done in the last four years is taken a $4 million budget for infrastructure, roads and bridges and streets, and taken it to, you know, 25, you know, with 30 being a number in there that we haven't ever actually spent. But, and this one, we geared it back to '21. We're trying to kind of maintain that, that trajectory on improving the streets, which I unanimously get great feedback from my constituents on. This council is taking care of the roads in this town, which make it a better, which make it a better place to visit, better place to get to work, better place to get to church, better place to get to school. So that is important to me and we're preserving that as well. Another part here is the strong cash reserves, taking that from the 18 to the 28, which that's not a small thing and that is in the 35 million range, I believe, to have that at our disposal. And that's the credit to the, to the, to staff and to our employees for making us a very efficient machine here. We are, we've got a great balance sheet. And I guess I'm going to segue into it, because I get a lot of feedback from my constituents on tax relief. And this is kind of a difficult time to incorporate tax relief in the context of having this kind of budget and having the uncertainty of the other big revenue drivers, the sales tax. And, you know, we've seen that drop and our budget reflects a material drop in the expected revenues there. So it sort of becomes, it becomes sort of difficult to, I guess, in a non-COVID time where we were seeing those sales taxes continue to rise even modestly, will give us some level of confidence to say, yeah, let's, let's go ahead and cut that rate. But even that, you know, I think that I've seen, I would like to consider ways to provide through, through this budget, and I don't want to take a machete to this thing or a chainsaw, because I think it's a very good budget. But I'd like to figure out a way to save a quarter to a half a cent on tax relief in there, which is 250 and a half a million bucks, which we can give back to the taxpayers over the course of a couple of years. It's a million bucks that we could do. And I'm not saying change anything in the budget. I don't want to change anything in the services. I don't want to change anything in economic development or to our specific goals. But a couple of ways that I'm, as I've gone through the budget package, which is, again, it's no small deal here. There's a lot to it. But the fact that we're taking the reserve from 18 to 28% and we are moving some of the cash out of the general fund, three to four million into that reserve, I think gives us access to a quarter to a half a million dollars and still being safe on a reserve. Maybe it's not quite 28% upfront, but I think we're safe over the course of layering in that 28% threshold. The second part, if the payment program, I know we, I've seen models where we would like to have 30 million a year in there, but if we can't support it and can't and don't have the resources to do it. I'm not opposed to stretching that. I think it was originally a seven or eight-year program, stretching it out to eight to 10 to 11 years and lowering that from 20 million even further. I know a lot of that is leveraged and the cash portion that isn't, doesn't give you that much bounce to find savings. And then the third aspect I'm thinking about in the budget is, and we've talked about this before, on the salaries and wages, I don't want to, I don't want to change anything in the the recommended compensation to the employees at all. But I want us to think and put a sharpener pencil on this to vacancy adjustments and hiring lag. And just, and I think staff knows what I'm talking about to explain, but to explain to the council, one of the guys know what I'm talking about too. A $70 million salaries and wage overhead, which is what we're looking at now, 71 million. That's 1,600 jobs at any given time, 150 to 160 are not filled. And we need to calculate, as we've done and I've done in previous work, calculate the number of weeks those jobs are open. And if that's three weeks, a month, six weeks, you take that 70% times the 10% vacancy, times the number of, the length of time that that period is open, you just lower your budget by whatever, anywhere from half a million to a million and not really touched your intent as far as compensation to the employees. So anyway, I, I would like to, I'm asking staff to, over the course of this next few weeks, before we finalize the budget, if they can find a quarter to half, half a penny in this, I would like to consider lowering the tax rate.
I'll follow up with that and I'll start where Holmes ended. And given the, your projected uncertainties, particularly with the appraisal district and the fact that we are at still about 1/3 of values that haven't been provided yet. And again, I want to, you know, as Chair of that board, I mean, I just want to say, I mean, we, the appraisal district waited a month to see if the state would give relief on property appraisals. They did not. The appraisal district had to accommodate both in-person and teleconference meetings, which have caused delays. They had to find adequate space outside of their normal offices to promote social distancing for the hearings that they've had to have and just the general kind of pandemic climate and having to deal with, with all of those sort of logistics. They've done, they really have done yeoman's work to this point. And it really, I mean, I commend their staff for getting it in. And I mean, it's, I wish that we had the full certified value because I know it injects an additional level. And I mean, I wish that we had the full certified value, because I know it injects an additional level of uncertainty at this point in the budgeting process. But it, I mean, it's, again, these are weird times, and they've done as well as they have. And I know you guys are doing as well as you could with the estimates at this point. But it is the fact that with kind of the uncertainty on that, the uncertainty surrounding sales tax, how the world will look over the next year, the fact that property valuations in economic recessions and situations like this, normally property tax collections, the real economic impact and the numbers really lag a year or two. There are too many variables that could go the wrong way for me to, at this point, be interested or supporting any type of tax rate cut, understanding that even leaving the tax rate where it is on general fund revenue side, we are going to be spending a percent and a half less than we have last year in terms of property taxes. We are collecting less on the general fund side than we did last year. And I think that by itself, I mean, that's enough of a hit at this point, considering all of the other ancillary concerns that might be, that could be addressed. Hopefully, everything works out well, but that's, at this point, there's just too much variability. And seeing the purposefulness and the, I don't know, just how y'all approached this budget, making sure, and as I said in the budget meeting a couple of weeks ago, going from, you know, we've invested in the city, and I think this budget invests in our community in ways that can, that will pay dividends and will support growth and will support neighborhood and economic and just community vitality for years to come, that I'm supportive and thankful for the work that y'all have done through all of that. I did have, you know, a couple of very minor questions, because I've seen most of this before, and I agree with kind of where y'all are going. Just calling out the fact that at the current estimated property tax growth of the 1.5% that the CIP is originally presented may not be fully realized, and that's just something y'all are going to come back to us about.
Yes, sir. We have projected a capacity of $23.5 million this year. That was based on a 3.5% increase in valuation. And as you know, if you project 3.5% for one year and then the following years, it has a compounding growth effect over time. We need to take another look at that. We will leave the budget as is in terms of proposed CIP, but we will be having additional discussions with you going forward.
Okay, because I mean, at the, again, from what I'm looking at, it, the 1.5% taxable assessed value change, that 23.5 we have budgeted, we'd only be able to spend 16.8, so we'd have to find additional projects to call or delay.
Yes, sir. If we end up at that level, I just provided those to the council so that you could see just, you know, the impact at different rates or different.
No, which I greatly appreciate. I mean, I like, we need that sort of sensitivity analysis and understanding that things may not work out the way we do. And if our estimates are wrong, what the impact is, and I think that's, I know, I applaud you and say thank you for doing that. Real quick, on the utility CIP, the 6 million in water and 5 million in wastewater for the water utility services building, can you, I don't know that I remember that particular one. Can you give me a little color on that?
Sure, I can. That's something that has been a part of the utilities plan for some time. The thought being that, as you know, the utility fund owns our development center, Dr. May Jackson Development Center. And there's been thought that, you know, due to limitations in parking and also the size of facility, that at some point in our future, it might make sense to build another building. That's placeholder dollars in our total CIP. We're going to be working with you and certainly with our water department staff going forward to talk about what that means. There's, even within our own staff here, there's some different thoughts in terms of whether that building is built, perhaps out by Riverside, or maybe built at another location here in downtown, and all the different ramifications of that. So I would call those placeholder dollars at this point, council member, and we'll be talking with the council in additional details going forward.
Okay, I appreciate that. And the only, again, the only other thing, I mean, I think you guys, these are, again, weird times, and you guys have done great on the budget. And again, the one other uncertainty that I would add to my reasoning to leave the tax rate where it is right now is legislative uncertainty in what will happen potentially to cities and our revenue sources in the next legislative session. I just got done with a two-day virtual policy summit with the Texas Municipal League. And I mean, and we are going to be just as challenged and not more so next year through the session. So again, while I appreciate the thought and want to be very considerate to the difficulties that all of our taxpayers are facing during this current economic environment, I believe leaving the tax rate where it is for this fiscal year makes the most sense. And so, and in general, thank you, guys. This is to echo Councilmember Holmes. This is more information than I think we've received in a more digestible and informative format. And it helps, I think it helps us and helps the public understand where our dollars are being spent, how our community as a whole will benefit from our budget, and reflects the priorities of both this council and our citizens in doing what is absolutely best for Waco with the dollars they provide us. So thank you, guys, for all of this.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I also want to thank Paul and your team for the exceptional work that you have done with this year's budget. I have thoroughly enjoyed going through this, and it has been very easy to follow along. So I want to appreciate you and your staff for the work that has taken place, not only in the last few weeks but months. As even in the middle of COVID-19, as we are faced with unprecedented times, the report that you are giving is still great news. You know, the fact that you are able to put tangible goals for each of council's seven priorities. I want to commend you on that, that we know, you have heard us, we know you have heard what's important to us, and you at Bradley and City Manager's Office have really just put a plan of action for how you will meet each of those goals. I want to commend you on the tax rate that is unchanged. I mean, if it's going to be done, this is the year to do it, because we are faced with so many uncertainties. Three-quarters of a penny below the no-new revenue tax rate. I want to commend you on that, that we are still below that. Our recurrent expense is down 2.1%. Congratulations on that. And on top of that, that we are still investing $90 million in improved infrastructure. All of that cannot be by chance or coincidence, but it has been by the work that you and your staff and the city as a whole has done, is due diligence. I also want to commend, and I've said this before, but the council before me that has been so tenacious and so cognizant of how the money is being spent have been very, very fiscally responsible with the budget that we've had prior year. So when we are hit with a crisis like COVID-19, and there are still so many unknowns, that we have still a little bit that we're not in as bad a position as we could be, had not been for the years of planning beforehand. And the fact that we are still having 28% of our revenue and reserves, I mean, it's just, it's just, it's not the story we were expecting, but it's just as good as. And so, thank you fully for your work, for that you've done with this. And I really appreciate the hours that you've put in into this budget, so thank you.
Thank you. And certainly want to give credit to all of our team. Our staff did a great job on this.
This is Councilmember Ewing. I just want to jump in and say thank you for all the information, not only from our state staff, but from my fellow council members in response to things as specific as the tax rate. I think I fall sort of right in the middle on the opinion to cut the tax rate. I don't think that, I think there's a lot of validity in the need to keep it as is, given the uncertainties we have going forward. But I also am pretty firmly against making decisions based on what will happen in the next six to 12 months, rather than looking forward past that. So jumping into what Councilmember Holmes pointed out, I think that even just looking at that as a practice, as a nudge to look at where we can sharpen our pencils on an annual basis, too specific for giving relief to the taxpayers, is something that I think, starting to practice of that. You know, if we have the time and the resources to do that and put toward that this year, and no one wants to have to cut an area and not have working fire trucks, obviously, but we want to look for ways that are strategic, that allow us to accomplish our goals, and then at the same time, allow us to give a benefit to the taxpayer. And so, I think that, you know, I don't want to look for a way to cut the tax rate this year in a nominal sense, so that we can pat ourselves on the back and tell people that we did it, only to have to raise it again next year past where it is right now, because that disparity would look even larger at that point. So that's something that, you know, we want to avoid, because taxpayers aren't going to remember the eight bucks we saved, and they're going to remember the amount that we raised it. So, you know, with that, I think just, again, my stance on this is just beginning to practice of looking for ways that we can sharpen our pencil on certain areas that allow us to continue to strive for and achieve our goals with the intention of giving a benefit to the taxpayers. If it is a quarter million or a half a million a year, and as that adds up and compounds, you know, I want to look for a way to do this in a sustainable way, in a way that's, you know, good stewardship of the money that we have, and that is sustainable and smart for the city, that allows our taxpayers to see a benefit in that, as their property taxes rise because of valuation of their homes. And that should continue to be the case outside of the next 12 months or so.
Thank you.
Oh, you're going back, go ahead.
Oh, just to, and, yeah, okay, I'll go ahead, Andrea. Just the, I think we're, the part that makes it unique to me, as I speak to my councilman here, is that we are raising that reserve from 18% to 28%. That is a lot of money. And we, I know we struggled in my early years in council to just raise it by a half a percent a year. And we now have the liquidity to take it all the way up to 28%. And to me, it's the time to return some money, whether it's nominal or not. And I think it's more than six or eight bucks a household, and that's part of what I'd like the staff to figure out. But it's a time where we do have liquidity, based on what we have done in the last four years and that, how those taxes have stayed the same and that revenue is driven, and how efficient we've been at city staff and city operations. So part of the, what I'd like, I'm asking staff to do also, what does a half a million mean per household? I haven't done all the math all the way through. But I just want to put it in the context of raising that reserve, because that's not an event that has ever happened. I don't think in the history of the city where we were able to just move that much money into a reserve all at once. But I'm sorry, Andrea, go ahead. I just wanted to throw that in there.
No, no problem. Thank you, Assistant City Manager Kane and staff, for all the work that you put into gathering this budget in this insane time. It's hard to gather information when the resources that you need don't even have the information. And it's, how do you, how do you gauge and answer something when a third of the information you need is not yet responded? So bless your heart. One of the things that I need to make sure that our people know is that if you look across the board and you look at other cities that are having to decrease services, that are having to eliminate staff, that are having to make those kinds of cuts, because their numbers don't align. Waco is sitting in a far better spot because of the fiscal conservativeness that previous councils have had and do, you know, and as we follow and gain, and then the skill sets of our finance team. So that's a good thing. You know, the fact that we perhaps, you know, while we're not doing, and I'm sure, you know, just out of the box, City Manager Ford may have gotten a side eye or two, because the first thing he said was, I'm not, you know, there'll be no increases right away. But, you know, I think you found a way to look at what that is mid-year, and I think that shows our responsibility to the 1,600-plus staff that we have in the city of Waco, because those are 1,600 households that we're, you know, dealing with. But, you know, I want to make sure that we're looking at the parts that we can control and the parts that we can't. And, you know, Paul, I want you to be able to speak to this a little bit more, you know, and tagging the questions that even Councilmember Holmes has. What does, because what you don't want to do is say we're going to do something that really doesn't have a, I can't feel. If I am a homeowner and we're going to, you know, because this is, it's, it's things that are tangible in my day-to-day bank account, but if I can't see it and feel it, does it matter? You know, I mean, not to you as a city, not to us as a city, you know, making sure that all the services stay and making sure that all the people stay. But if I can't feel it, how am I going to gain any benefits? So if it's minimal enough that it's not going to do anything, you know, for me personally, I don't know, I wouldn't sacrifice making an adjustment in such as unknown times. I mean, because there's just, it's too many uncertainties that we are still dealing with and will not let go of right this minute. And I don't, I don't know that I'm comfortable making that kind of shift. Now, what I do want to be clear is that, you know, we are putting a whole, a whole lot more resources in the community. So, you know, I may not be putting, you know, 50 cents per hundred in your pocket, but, you know, if I have allowed more access to resources for our small business owners, for our, you know, neighborhood communities, if I'm using our new, you know, new version of this budget, you know, to the betterment of my community, then I think that we've done what we're supposed to do. You know, because again, we're not raising, we're not lowering, we're just not changing, and haven't for the past, what'd you say?
Seven.
Seven years?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. So I don't think that, and while I know, and I feel you, Jim, that it feels like we should, because it's crazy town around here. But I don't know that it would benefit us in the long game to make, to short something, to have to increase it tomorrow. When I say tomorrow, I mean in the next year or so. But what I do want us to do, and this is on us, is controlling the narrative of what we're doing. We need to be clear in the benefits that are being added in our city. We need to be clear in what actually are included in our services that we deliver. And we need to, you know, we need to do a better job at messaging what we're doing. Because if no one knows, and I'm just saying, oh, well, they didn't even, they, you know, they didn't decrease our tax rate, and we, but if I gave you additional services, where's the balance? You know, what, which one is, because I do believe that the increase in services that we're doing will outweigh those pennies. I could be wrong, but I don't think so. So I want us to do a better job in messaging. I would like, you know, to see what, you know, what we're giving versus, you know, what we could give. And, but I think that the way it is right this minute, if I had to, right this minute, yes, I'm going to support what this is, because it's too much, too much uncertainty. And I think in the end of the day, at the end of the day, and then this fiscal year, we'll come out where we can still provide exceptional service for our people and just keep growing.
Thank you, councilmembers. And again, Paul, thank you to you and your team for great, really great job on this budget. As Jim said and John said, this thing has evolved really, the process is getting better and better every year. And that's a credit to you and your team. I am, at this point, of the same opinion as Councilmember Canard and Councilmember Bearfield, that I think there's too much uncertainty right now to consider a nominal tax cut that will do very little for our individual homeowners and potentially put us in some kind of jeopardy during this time of pandemic, and then coupled with the actions that the state legislature has taken and may take further in the future. So I just, I would have a very hard time thinking that we shouldn't support a nominal tax cut at this point. But, you know, if, if we need to look at what those numbers look like, we can certainly do that. At this point, unless there are further questions, I'll turn it back to City Manager, to our City Manager, Braden Ford.
All right. Thanks, council, and thanks, Paul, and the team again for all the great work.
Thank you.
Our next work session, Mayor, will be Galen Price joining us for a discussion of efforts to address homelessness in the city of Waco and McLennan County. He'll be speaking directly into our partnerships and, and potential solutions that are coming down the way. So Galen, take us away.
All right. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. As City Manager Ford mentioned, we will be discussing the actions that the city of Waco has taken to address homelessness. As a follow-up to our informal report provided to the city council on July twenty-first, the presentation will provide an overview of actions to address homelessness and discuss the youth homeless demonstration grant the area received and how it fits into the scope of addressing homelessness issues. Ending homelessness requires a collective effort of community partners utilizing homeless prevention and assistance funding to implement effective programs and strategies that are data-driven and guided by best practices. Through collaboration, continuous improvement and identification of new strategies, we can make homelessness brief, rare, and non-reoccurring within our community. This presentation will look at demographics, share the efforts of our homelessness response, homeless response system, as well as discuss funding to support this vulnerable population during the COVID-19 pandemic, along with discussing our Youth Homeless Demonstration Program Grant. This chart shows the demographics regarding our homeless population. During our last point in time count, we had a total of two hundred and thirty-four homeless persons counted. A hundred and fifty-eight of those would be adult homeless. Youth homeless count was seventy-six. Bearing in mind that youth is counted up to the age of twenty-four. From a ethnicity standpoint, we had fifty-eight counted that were Hispanic Latino and a hundred and seventy-six that were counted as non-Hispanic Latino. From a racial breakdown, we had a hundred and thirty-three persons who identified as white, eighty-eight persons who identified as African-American, and included eleven people who identified as multiraces. Our Heart of Texas Homeless Coalition is comprised of thirty organizations and thirty-plus organizations and volunteers who strive to address homelessness issues within our six-county area. Some key members of our Heart of Texas Homeless Coalition include the Heart of Texas Regional MHMR, the Salvation Army, Mission Waco, Family Abuse Center, The Cove, the VA, Caritas, Waco ISD Homeless Outreach, Central Texas Youth Services, and the Waco Housing Authority. The Homeless Coalition fosters awareness on the issues of homelessness, advocates on behalf of those persons experiencing homeless, homelessness with supporting a coordinated network of services and resources with the goal of making the experience brief, wear, and a one-time experience. This slide, this slide highlights the amount of funding that has been received in our service area. Funding includes the Continuum of Care Grant, which focuses on permanent housing solutions for those experiencing homelessness. A runaway and homeless youth grant, which provides emergency shelter, street outreach, maternity group homes, and independent living housing for youth, as well as supportive services for veteran families grant, which provides supportive services and rapid rehousing for veterans in our community. The column on the left on this slide highlights the supportive services offered within the community, which include case management and mental health services. The column on the right highlights the housing and shelter programs offered within the community, which include transitional housing and permanent supportive housing. Do the special populations served by these funds include veterans, youth, families, chronic homeless, and survivors of domestic violence and human trafficking? Additional programs include our Project Homeless Connect, which is a biannual service and resource fair for those experiencing homelessness. During the winter point in time count, the annual point in time, during the winter point Project Homeless Connect, the annual point in time count is conducted and the needs are assessed. We also do a collaboration with the Homeless Coalition, the VA, and endeavors to meet the United Interagency Council on Homelessness Benchmarks for declaring an end to veteran homelessness. Annually, the Heart of Texas Homeless Coalition develops a strategic plan with goals, objectives, and actions with steps to focus on key areas including the community presence of the Homeless Coalition and as well as expanding the number of participants in the continuum of care and as part of the Homeless Coalition. As part of our COVID response, and on April twenty-first, US Council provided additional resources to help address the issues of, of COVID and how it was, how it affected our homeless community. We provided funding for Mission Waco and Salvation Army for twenty-four-seven shelter operations. We provided funding for homeless individuals with hotel, with hotel accommodations who are affected by COVID-19 to allow them to self-quarantine and isolate from the general shelter populations, as well as we are providing funding to assist with rental mortgage and utility payments for approximately a hundred and fifty per individuals or households for homeless prevention. Now I'll be discussing our Youth Homeless Demonstration Program Grant. The Youth Homeless Demonstration Program Grant, or YHDP, is a HUD two-year demonstration grant where communities test innovative, innovative projects focused on ending and preventing youth homelessness. Projects may apply for waivers to go outside of the federal regulations that govern the traditional continuum of care program. The YHDP projects, YHDP projects will have two-year grant terms and may be renewed for one year under the continuum of care program if they meet statutory requirements. How does the program work? Congress allocates funding for the demonstration rounds to HUD. Communities then will create a coordinated community plan that assesses the needs of youth at risk of and experiencing homelessness in the community and addresses how we use the money from the YHDP grant, along with other funding sources to address these needs. Our local area received a two-point-two, three-million-dollar grant under the YHDP program. Of course, the projects will run for two years as part of the demonstration program. The, a local competition for these funds were, was held in spring of 2020. The work focused on principles and goals founded and drafted in the coordinated community plan to prevent and end youth homelessness. Those projects include a youth drop-in center, transitional housing, rapid rehousing, as well as the heart-to-home youth navigation. The role of the city of Waco in the YHDP program is that the COC Administrator acts as the YHDP program manager, project manager, to assist in leading the YHDP planning efforts as the YHDP is a part of the COC program. In addition, we provide matching funds towards the YHDP planning grant awarded, awarded to the YHDP lead agency, which is the Heart of Texas Regional MHMR, for YHDP-related work for the Continuum of Care Administrator. We're also seeking a signature of support from the city manager that supports our belief in the plan. As part of the requirements for HUD to release the funds, a signature of support as mentioned previously is required from the local government, the Youth Action Board, the Runaway and Homeless Youth Grantees, the Continuum of Care, as well as the YHDP Lead Agency. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Just a couple of quick ones, Galen, I appreciate this. A, I want to just reiterate and say how grateful we are to HUD for their continued partnership in our community. They've invested significant dollars with us and have become, not only in the youth homelessness, but also in the, in the let abatement programs. And, I mean, that's, that's a, I don't know, a seal of approval or it's, it's a show of confidence in us and in our team and the work we're doing that I'm greatly appreciative of and I'm, I'm glad that they've, they've come alongside in a few different new and innovative ways to help support our community and fund some really important initiatives to kind of move the needle on some of the more intractable issues within our city. The only, you know, this is, this is good information. I mean, we're spending, you know, we got almost four million in grant funding, not including the HUD dollars, I believe, or that might include that. I'm just, I'm just curious, you know, your slide showed currently, what is that, a hundred and, or two hundred and thirty, yeah, two hundred and thirty-four identified homeless individuals? How's, how's that trend looking? What have we seen particularly over the last six months with the pandemic? And just, and how has it looked over the last few years? Are we, are we moving the needle or are we heading in the right direction? Yeah, how's that population looking change, change over time?
This year compared to the last year when we did our point in comms, point in time count, we did have a slight increase. As far as over the last six months, just kind of with the, the COVID-19, as well as other things that have happened, we haven't seen a steady increase or decrease in our homeless population. It has somewhat maintained itself a, at this point in time. And I think that can be attributed to different ways that we're attacking and addressing the needs to further prevent homelessness through rental assistance and just trying to meet the needs of individuals through our other programs to prevent them from becoming homelessness or increasing that number that we currently have.
Okay. No, I mean, I just, I mean, I know this is, this is one, again, one of those intractable issues. I know that the, our experience is not as bad as some of our, the larger urban areas, both in our state and in the country. And for that, I'm, you know, moderately thankful. But still understanding this is a problem that needs addressing and it seems like we have some resources to put to it to continue to hopefully alleviate the problem. And so I just, I, we, we got a lot going on in this area and so I appreciate the, the information and looking forward to, because to seeing, seeing the benefits of all of, of these resources and all the work that we're putting in. So I appreciate what y'all are doing on here.
Hey, Galen, thank you so much for your presentation as well. I had some of the same questions that Councilmember Canard did as far as, you know, how accurate these numbers were, but I do appreciate you explaining that. I did have one other question. Will you share the slide where it says the update on the money that was put aside for organizations for COVID-19? I believe on there it had like the Salvation Army, it had EOAC, Mission Waco. How has the majority of that money been spent or how close are we to spending that money?
Based on their current, they're right on target to spend all of the funding that they were awarded. We issued those contracts through the end of the fiscal year, which would be September thirtieth, and right now they are on pace to exhaust those funds. Where we are seeing an increased need is for the hotel accommodations, which we will be bringing an item back in the future to council to look at addressing hotel accommodations because we're starting to see more and more of a need for isolation of homeless individuals to help prevent a potential outbreak amongst the shelters.
Does that include, thank you for that, does that include also the rental assistance program they're on track? And the reason I ask is because I don't know why, if I read somewhere or, or I saw something, but where not much of that money had been dispersed and I didn't know where we were with that money.
Yes, with the rental assistance program, we're, we're working on ways to develop and working, just working with individuals to make sure they need, they get the proper and necessary documentation. Part of the challenges have been is individuals providing all the information that's needed to get us to the point where we're able to assist. With these being federal funds, there are a lot of documentation and things that we are required to gather before we're able to provide the assistance. So that has been a challenge, but we are working with EOAC and having discussions about better ways to improve those and overcome those challenges, challenges that people are facing so we can and make sure we get the funds out and get everybody assisted who needs help.
I would like to explore opportunities. There is a lot of need here in our community and a lot of need from, as we even saw from this past, a couple of days ago, the paper ran an article about evictions that are coming up and the lack of help that is being provided for families that have been impacted by COVID-19 and their inability at this current time to pay for that. And so I didn't know if there was an opportunity, I mean, there is need out there. And so if the word is not getting out through EOAC, maybe there's an opportunity to partner with someone else like Prosper Wake or, or another nonprofit organization that could help us reach the masses, especially those that are really, that have been impacted by COVID-19. And so, you know, my understanding is that a huge portion of that three hundred and seventy-eight thousand is still available. And we've been doing this for a few weeks now and in the meantime, now people are starting to get evicted or feel more pressure from COVID-19. And so if there's an opportunity to possibly look another route or partner with another organization, and I appreciate EOAC for all of the work that they've done, but, you know, just to help disseminate that information and help more people as much as possible, I would definitely love to explore that option.
Yes, sir, we will do so, definitely do so.
Thank you so much, sir.
I just had a quick couple of questions. First, regards to hotel room accommodations, you said you're seeing more, a greater, near rise there specifically. Are you getting pushback from hotels or has that, has that been an easy sort of accommodation process?
We have, we've established, we've had, we've established a relationship with a, a particular hotel who has been more than willing to partner with us during, to, to, to host these individuals in their facility. So we have been able to secure and it's been a, a beneficial partnership for the hotel as well as the, the agencies. The hotel has been extremely cooperative in working with us to address this need. So, and we're very appreciative, appreciative to that hotel for stepping up and stepping in to help.
That's great. And the, the other thing with EOAC and dispersing the rental assistance funds, it sounds like you guys are taking steps to do this, but I'd like to just say it and, and hear, hear verbal confirmation on this, but just doing everything you can to eliminate as much on the front end for the people these funds are going to benefit, whether that's having a, you know, easier read.
whether that's having a, a, you know, easy to read, easy to find, one pager for, here, check all these boxes. These are the forms you have to have. Bring this envelope in with all these boxes checked and you're, you'll know you're good to go. Um, or, you know, something along those lines, because it seems like, and this makes as much sense as anything, that federal funds obviously come with a lot of red tape. Uh, but it seems as if uh that is the biggest trip hazard right now. So, you know, what uh, I just wanna to make sure, and like I said, from what you said, it seems as if this is happening, but make sure that we're doing everything we possibly can to eliminate as much of a barrier as possible, whether that's, like I said, just providing extensive lists of what they need or um even uh having someone whose whole job it is to, you know, to make sure that they're not having to come back four, five, and six times, but rather, um, you know, they're sitting with them and, like I said, checking down boxes for things that they have, so.
Yes, sir. Definitely will continue to do so.
Um, thank you, Galen, for the presentation. Um, just a thought, um, you all were incredibly nimble in getting uh information and resources during the small business grant uh application period and mounting up resource centers for people with questions and concerns. Could that same practice not be it um stood back up for perhaps the rental assistance? Because I do know that when you're dealing with the federal government, you've got to have all your i's dotted and t's crossed. And there are um information gaps. Um, so is there, is that an opportunity that it may, it may not be a flyer, but it may be from this time to this time, we're gonna have these people at this place who can, you know, make sure that you know, this is what you have to have, this is what it looks like, this is where you find it. Is that an option? I mean, cause I mean, it, it, y'all turned it on a dime for the small business grant and we appreciated it. I mean, like I said, monumental work um uh that got done. Uh, and so I was wondering if that was applicable to this.
Yes, we can, we definitely can look at doing the same thing for uh this grant as we did for the small business grant.
Thank you, appreciate it.
That's a great suggestion, Mayor Parktown, Bearfield, and uh, Galen, a great, great presentation and appreciate everything that you're doing here in this area. You've got a lot of responsibilities right now with the things that you're handling for us with code enforcement uh as well as uh housing and, and uh homelessness as well. So thank you for all the great work you're doing.
Thank you, thank you.
Any, anybody else have any further uh questions or comments? Okay, Bradley, we'll turn it back to you for the next slide.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Galen. This is, uh, this next work session, uh, I think the council's been waiting on for a few weeks. Um, so I'm excited to hear from Jonathan Cook, our Director of Parks and Rec- Recreation, on the progress that's gone on at Greenwood Cemetery and the improvement project, as well as an overview of the other city cemeteries uh that we support. Uh, Jonathan, take us away, sir.
I sure will. Thank you, Bradley. Uh, Mayor, council members, as, as Bradley said, I'm Jonathan Cook, Director of the Parks and Recreation Department. And today we're going to do a, a little stroll through our cemetery portfolio a- and then finally, we're gonna capitalize by talking about a great project that's uh long overdue and been taking place out of Greenwood Cemetery. But to start, uh, we are gonna look at just the relationships of parks and cemeteries. I, I, I think a lot of people might not realize that we do have cemeteries as part of our parks portfolio. And uh, we're gonna go down the list wi- with a quick overview of several of those, some that we maintain, other that we have partnerships and partners to where we work for the maintenance and operations on. But to start, I, I wanna recognize that throughout McLennan County, there are more than two hundred cemeteries. And these can range from small to large, family cemeteries, cemeteries that have been around for over a hundred and fifty years. And I give a little reference, the cemeteries that the city currently manages are, are listed in red here and really spread across the town, from the small dot of Cobb's Walker Cemetery um over to Greenwood Cemetery, uh First Street and Hebrew Rest, which is along the river behind the Ranger Museum. And then down at the bottom, the large red uh property is our Rosemount Cemetery. And I did add in Oakwood Cemetery. Uh, that's a cemetery that most people are familiar with and wanted to provide a reference as we see that cemetery and it's really a neighboring cemetery to Rosemount, and they have a longstanding relationship. So really looking at the cemetery and park connection, you know, cemeteries are a place where obviously life meets death, uh, nature meets city. A- and really more striking, uh, what we've really gotten into lately is where the present meets the past. And cemeteries were some of the first public parks in America and really fits in with our mission of preserving and protecting our natural areas. And a lot of people might not realize, but Central Park actually took a lot of its design elements from cemeteries. And in the mid eighteen hundreds, we had the formation of what were called garden or rural cemeteries. And this is where we started seeing elaborate monuments and memorials in a landscape setting. As urban cemeteries became full, people started moving out to the outskirts of the urban areas. And what this allowed was for all walks of life to be able to enjoy these cemeteries. And we also started seeing a lot of symbolism uh to where ivy represents sleep or where oak leaves represent immortality. And it really opened them up an outdoor museum uh for people of all walks to get out and enjoy. And uh, a place where people can learn about nature, obviously, and, and we still see that now as green spaces become limited. Cemeteries are being revived as communal spaces. And um, I tell you, here in Waco, I, I think it's very important, um, and I talk all the time, is us doing a better job of really promoting our cemeteries as an outdoor classroom and really looking into the historical significance. Uh, one prime example of that i- is Cobb's Walker Cemetery. Um, and I tell you, this is a cemetery that I really found probably the most unique that we have, um, because it's in an area, a small lot, uh, right as you're driving downhill crests, which I'm sure many of us have driven down before, and you might not even notice it. And, and it's stuck between two houses. Created in eighteen fifty-three, you realize that at one time this was farmland on the outskirts of the city. And now here it sits and still being preserved in the middle of this heavy residential area. And it's a very unique historical significance that includes several graves of former slaves, along with graves of two fat veterans of the Texas War for Independence, and then one from the Battle with San Jacinto. Now we'll move on, in First Street and Hebrew Cemetery, uh, cemeteries that we are all familiar with, as I mentioned earlier, sit along the Brazos River, uh, behind the Ranger Museum and next to our Fort Fisher Park, who are really a picture rest setting, and for really generations, people traveling down I thirty-five have stopped by in these areas and you have really majestic oak trees um a- and great picnic area along the river there. And I tell you, this is where a lot of our founding fathers of our community are now laid to rest. Uh, First Street Cemetery actually is composed of three historic cemeteries um and was acquired by the city in eighteen sixty-six, um, and actually was established in eighteen fifty-two. Uh, both the Texas uh Historical Commission and then also the Department of Interior represent a- and recognize First Street Cemetery for its historical nature. Um, right next to First St- First Street Cemetery, um, is Hebrew Rest Cemetery. A lot of people think these are, are the same, but if, once you look at it and observe, they're two very distinct different cemeteries. As Hebrew Rest is a, a very compact, uh, very well fallout, laid out cemetery that was established in eighteen sixty-nine that really exemplifies our Jewish heritage. Um, amazing, we did make some property acquisitions here uh in the late eighteen hundreds. Uh, but still, Hebrew Rest only includes about three acres and contains more than thirty-five hundred burials, including one of our founding fathers of Jacob Day Cordova. Um, I mentioned that as it started to expand it and also First Street Cemetery Room. Um, Oakwood Cemetery, as I mentioned before, was created in eighteen seventy-eight. A- and really the city started, uh, that cemetery started growing and followed up in, in nineteen seventeen as Oakwood continued to grow. The city saw a need to really create an alternative of, lack of better terms, a low-cost alternative to Oakwood Cemetery uh for all walks of life here in Waco. And the city purchased two hundred acres and Rosemount was plotted out in nineteen twenty-three. Now, this is still an active cemetery and the largest cemetery in our portfolio and uh now has more than the resting place of eighteen thousand individuals. And burials still take place there uh throughout the week, almost on a daily basis. Now, uh, Rosemount Cemetery, i- it does include um several sections, the war veteran section, baby land, a cremation garden. And then also a special section of, of this cemetery is what's called the Garden of Memories, which holds a special significance to our Hispanic community. And this area was gr- uh, established in nineteen twenty-nine. And as I mentioned, it's a great complement to Rosemount Cemetery. Um, one of the unique things about Rosemount is the partnership that we have for the maintenance and operation. In uh, two thousand twelve, we created a partnership with the Oakma- Oakwood Cemetery Association to really improve the efficiency uh and the viability of the cemetery. And um, we have an agreement right now that goes through twenty twenty-two uh to where this association and um I, I give much credit to Clint Lynch, who oversees this and their board, play a very active role and, and do a great job in the management and operation. Um, each year the city does contribute uh an annual sum right now of a hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred. Um, this has escalated somewhat over the years and we then, we oversee the Rosemount Endowment Fund as well. Um, currently we have, as we're looking at the budget, we know there are some needed improvement projects. Um, cemeteries, like everything else, uh, they age and often when it comes to parks, um, you know, it gets overlooked sometimes. But we do have some improvements in regards to the roadways and the restroom facilities to get them ADA compliant. Um, a- and I tell you what, I, I spent a lot of time out and working as I first became director and really getting to know cemeteries. Um, and Clint giving me a tour and, and it never failed, Rosemount. Um, there's always somebody out there, uh, you know, taking the time to recognize their lost loved ones. And so it's very important that we provide them and with the work of the association, we really feel like that we have a proper place where people can go out and pay the respects. Now I'll move on back to Greenwood Cemetery. And, and this one has been on our radar for quite some time and y'all are familiar with the project that we have there. And uh, for a hundred and twenty years, Greenwood Cemetery has stood as a final resting place for many Wacoans and has a historic landmark for Waco history. Um, I, I go back to a statement I, I made earlier in the presentation about where past meets present. And uh, that could be no more true for this cemetery is uh, we've worked on this cemetery and it's amazing to me, twenty-two acres. Um, and I'll give you a little bit of overview of what we're looking at. Here's from the Highway seventy-seven overpass and really overlooking uh this widespread acreage here, great green space. And you can see the project we've been working on with this long line of perimeter fencing, uh, new entrances to the cemetery. But I go back to the past meets the presence. This is a place where uh there are burials uh for many of the Wacoans who perished in one of our nation's last pandemics of the Spanish flu back in nineteen eighteen. And as we all know, this cemetery speaks to a lot of the racial injustices that have plagued our nation um over the past a hundred and fifty years. And as that is a topic of today, we know that this cemetery was a cemetery that had a fence divided down the middle. And I really like looking at this picture and noticing and thinking before and after that that fence no longer stands and we have a proper perimeter fencing to protect and preserve the history that we have here. Um, burials at Greenwood date back to eighteen seventy-five and perhaps even further of record. Um, and include some of our most notable African-American citizens, uh, such as the great Broadway singer Jules Bledsoe, uh, the accomplished professor, Dr. Vivian Lucille Malone Mayes. And I, I mentioned her, one of the more interesting ones that I, in looking at and notable, she was the only, the fifth African-American woman in the nation to receive a doctorate in mathematics. And she went on to become the first African-American faculty member at Baylor University. Um, quite a special memory and then also, uh, I know some of us are glad baseball is back. You've got a Hall of Famer out there in Andrew Lewis Cooper, who was inducted into the Hall of Fame. Um, but even more so, those are notables, but um, you know, I've spent probably too many, but I don't know if enough, of, of lunch breaks out there at Greenwood as this project is taken on. And, and it's really a captivating cemetery and I go back, you learn about it and the significance and the history that there is really something that I'm glad that we've been able to take care of this project. It's a project that started way back in two thousand fifteen and, and you notice the gentleman up on the screen, a formal council member of Noah Jackson. And uh, this project probably would have not taken place wi- without his leadership and direction that he provided um on the council and with our staff. And much appreciation for him taking what we had of some associations that manage the cemetery and said, hey, the neglect, the overgrown weeds, the trash, this isn't right. And it's not right, and Mr. Jackson, if you're listening today, and I know I've spoke with you, um, this project has come to a completion. Uh, and we're glad to announce that, that the current uh pro- project, we've got new perimeter fencing. Uh, we also have ornate entrances, three of those with green wood arches overseeing that, also including historical signage and we're revegetating areas. We've done a lot of tree work and brush removal. Um, and I tell you, it's a project that within our department is taking on a special meeting and one that's going to continue to be at the forefront of our operations. Along with the construction, it, it's also nice to see a lot of our volunteers. Um, I've also stepped up and we have students, we're doing um a lot of electronic transfer of the records that we have. And then also doing the grid of the burial size and working with archaeologists. So i- it has been a project that's taken a long time, obviously, when you're working with the cemetery, uh, there's a lot of ins and outs and delicate features as you're putting in and digging into the ground. And I give kudos to our staff, especially our uh Parks Planner, Tom Bulk, has done a great job on this project. And um, I'll end with a, a great picture of a pedestrian entrance here at Greenwood. Um, I, I think that captivates just how much it's changed and uh say that every cemetery has a story to tell. And um, as our Parks Department, it's our mission to protect and preserve the beauty, beauty and tranquility of these parks. So with that said, um, I tell you, I really wish I could be announcing that we'd be having a, a grand ribbon cutting or a grand opening out here at Greenwood. Due to COVID, we're a little limited to that, but we are working together our plans to do a virtual opening uh to where we give a tour and work with Larry Holsey and his crew to have a video example. And we'll be announcing those plans, but if any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Jonathan, this is uh, this is Holmes, uh, great presentation. Um, I like your perspective on how this is uh such an integral part of Waco's history. And then, you know, cemeteries are just history lessons in and of themselves. Uh, and uh, the, the fact that we uh have made it priority to treat them with respect and to make them better and more uh easier to visit and walk around in. So uh, thanks for what you've done and what Tom's done. And again, when Noah was on council with us, as he made this a priority of his, he really, he really brought life to this and uh helped make it happen and uh I appreciate what, what Noah's input in this deal was as well. Um, so again, thanks for being proactive on this and uh I think it's the right thing to do as far as taking care of the cemeteries. And the, the Greenwood one in particular, which was uh from a real estate investor guy, just putting all that and assembling that was such a fascinating and time-consuming process that y'all uh finally put together. Uh, congratulations to you and your staff on, on figuring that out. Uh, and uh, I'm glad you finally got to make this presentation, Jonathan. I hated it, had you sitting in the wings like five weeks, five sessions in a row, so.
That's all right. We've, we've had budget and uh, like I said, I'm glad we've gotten to the end of it. So thank you for your comments, Councilman Holmes.
Um, I'll, I'll just add that it's, it's funny, I, uh, former mayor friend of mine up in Arkansas reached out to me earlier today, uh, completely unrelated to this, and asked about our work on Greenwood Cemetery uh because she is attending a, a conference on racial equity. And uh, the work on modern day reconciliations uh was part of their breakout session and Greenwood came up. Um, so I just, I want to commend staff and the work that we are doing uh to um preserve and, and remember and move forward uh with this, this really important piece of, of Waco history. So just, just thank you guys. I want you, I wanted you to know that other people are talking about it too.
I um, I, you know, have the slide because we're in the presentation. I don't know if anyone else is talking or not. Um, thank you, um, Jonathan, for finally getting to deliver this presentation on Greenwood. I know that the process has been a long time coming and I am ever appreciate, appreciative for uh Councilmember Jackson's dedication to seeing it through. I know that once this, um, whenever the virtual or uh unveiling ribbon cutting is, that he will be um safely, you know, one of the people who is first in line to be there because this was um a, a very important to him and, and I'm really excited to, to get, that, that he will get to experience this. Um, so one of the things that you said, I, I actually had had a question on, is that um, how, you spoke about the grid of the markers. Um, where is that going? Um, where is that going to be housed? So how would a person, if I was interested in, you know, if finding my loved ones and I've been looking at a gate that, you know, historically shouldn't have been there, but was there for so long? And that gate is now gone. So how then do I recognize, because if that serves as a marker, where my loved ones are? So how would one, how would a person find that grid?
Correct. At Greenwood, being a cemetery that, that we oversee the maintenance and although, um, there are still burials that do take place out there, um, not as frequent, but that does fall under our area. So we would work with Esparelda a- as people reach out and within our department and that'll be housed. That's a project that's ongoing. Um, as you know, and Councilman Holmes mentioned, the, the real estate and the different ownerships and a lot of it, it's a very tedious work. And so we're not only working with the historical folks on that, uh, working with Clint and the Rosemount and Oakwood Association, they've been converting a lot of those records that they have. Um, and so that's going to be something that's going to be housed here within the city. Once we get to that point, um, we're in the process of Greenwood. Right now we just sort of have an informative page on our website that talks about Greenwood. That's going to be updated as far as with new pictures and it'll be housed in that location.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, uh, thank you again for, um, making sure that this information is, is personal because it, it is imperative as Councilmember Holmes to honor our, our loved ones that, uh, are deceased. And, and this project is huge and so we appreciate all the time, energy and effort that staff has placed into that.
Thank you.
Well, I'll, uh, I'll just say, Jonathan, thank you for a great report and it, it really is great to see this project, uh, finally completed. Uh, lots of, uh, great work, uh, by your department and Tom was certainly a, a key part of this. We appreciate everything he did on that, uh, and the rest of your staff as well. And I also want to thank former Councilmember, uh, Jackson for his contributions to this project. Uh, it is, it's something we can be proud of as a city now and, uh, and, and particularly enjoyed your, uh, all your presentations about the other, uh, cemeteries as well. That's very interesting stuff and, uh, we've obviously got, uh, additional work to do in, in some of those areas. So thank you for that. Uh, if there aren't any other, uh, questions or comments, I will, uh, ask, are there any council requests for future agenda items? Okay, seeing none, uh, we'll now recess the work session, reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the City Secretary at 5:14 PM.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071. Permit application for proposed landfill, Texas Commission on Environmental Quality Permit Number MSW-2400. Two, real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. And three, economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We are now in executive session at 5:14 PM.